On a similarly steep lot, it is possible to develop the lot. But that, especially with that level area at the top, and given that Rhodes End in an earthquake and tsunami likely would be cut off from the rest of the city, it seems like a good location for a cache, emergency cache.
And who would be in charge of that?
That would be the city.
The city.
That would be the city.
And they would get the building or whatever, they would stock it?
Yes, sir.
And maintain it?
Yes, sir.
Actually, that isn't...
Talking about a number of those around the city, this would just be one location as a possibility. Typically, I believe the thought is it would be like a shipping container that's full of essential things.
Isn't the police department doing their own? Does the city actually have one?
Well, we, yes and no.
Okay.
Yes, we do, in as far as that we are stocking up on supplies. But no, we have not put them throughout the community. They're at our Public Works Station and at the various Public Works Buildings. This is actually part of the county's overall plan was to have these caches throughout the county, both within the cities and outside of the incorporated areas. And so it's, and so we've looked at this property with the idea that does it make sense to use that for a cache in the future?
And I think also to answer your question, at least the discussions we've had in Rhodes End with our community is that if the city could provide the location and the container, that I think that it was the residents who would provide whatever, you know, your own, like your food and your own cots. We have a number of cots from our Neighborhood Association and just don't have a place to put them. So I don't know that we in Rhodes End were expecting, you know, the city to put anything in it except for providing the space and the container. That's a discussion that we've been having for years, so...
My concern, and I'll try not to beat this to death, my concern with the Neighborhood Association taking it over is the accountability. They come, they go, people move, and you've got something that's been sitting there for three years, nobody's checked the water supply, nobody's checked the food, nobody's checked up on it. And I just want to make sure that if we're going to say this is where you need to go in an emergency, that that has been properly maintained.
Right. And I think that's the beauty of a Neighborhood Association because it doesn't matter if the same people are there, or if you have a whole new board or a whole new membership. If it's one of the priorities of the Neighborhood Association, which it is for ours, then that just goes with the, with the association, with the organization. It doesn't matter, you know, who's the president is or who isn't.
As long as the neighborhood exists.
Well, it has since 1972, I think you can count on us.
Okay. Anyway.
So along that same line, and since Nell Scott Neighborhood President is in the audience, I'll put in a plug that they have five 60-gallon plastic barrel caches that are for sale. And our neighborhood has been in existence, Mr. Mayor, for 25 years, so I don't think they go away too readily.
Who needs more?
Okay, so let me move on. Map number four.
I'm not sure I got a sense of where you want us to go with this.
Oh, keep it as a cache, right? Yeah.
I'd go with recommendation number one.
Yep.
I'd go with recommendation number one.
Okay. Map number four is in Ocean Lake, and this one is, this one, our recommendation, as we've been discussing for a while, is to develop the property based on the community concept and TGM feasibility study. So this would be a mixed-use development project.
I say go with recommendation number one.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
Yeah, go back, please. Could you go back, please?
One more to the cache?
No, I'm sorry, I thought you skipped ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
So the question I have is, when the recommendation says develop property, is that to...
This is the direction.
That's not us develop, that's the property offered up for development?
Yes, when we say develop, we would not be doing the development. We would be partnering with other people, and the partnership could involve just giving the land, or having a price for the land, or, but basically, we're not going to let the land go until we have some assurance that the development is going to happen how we all want it to. So whatever goals the community and Urban Renewal Agency have already set forward is how staff is moving along with this particular property.
So how successful has that strategy been?
Well, we haven't done it before. As you know, we have properties that we have always talked about developing or redeveloping, and that's part of our economic development conversation that we'll be having on the 15th. We'll give you more of an update on the four properties that we have identified as properties you want to sell and/or redevelop. Again, sell being the goal, we don't want to be retaining these projects, we just want to make sure that the way they're developed is meeting the needs of the agency and the community, so...
But as a buyer, what incentive would there be for me to pay for it and then do what you want to do with it?
Those kinds...
If I paid for it, I'd want to do what I want it to do.
Right. And this is very typical for a public-private partnership. Communities all over do these sorts of projects, we just haven't done one here in town. We don't also have many commercial developers, so we have been doing some outreach, and again, I will give you an update on the four properties and where staff is and what our plans are to get them moved off the public tax roll, or off the public ownership and onto the tax rolls via doing redevelopment or development.
It's also important not to confuse use with look. For example, it might be 100 different uses, but there's a style or a look or a way in which we'd like to see it developed.
And the reason why we purchased them in the first place was because we wanted some kind of control over either the look or what happens there, which could be very broad or could be very narrow. Okay. Are there any other questions on 15th Street?
So, I do, sorry, and I'm not grilling you, I'm just curious, how's the parking in that area? Could it use another parking lot?
Yeah, we've talked about that, and this project would need to be mixed use, which would incorporate a residential component, at least one unit, in order to work well with the parking requirements.
Are you talking about just making it a parking lot, though?
Just making it a parking lot.
Yeah, we've talked about that, and we can, I'd love to talk with you more about it on the 15th. But our concern tonight is mostly on the other properties and what you want to do with those.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Okay, map number five, this is in the Ocean Lake or Kurtzus Park area of town. It's in the RM Zone, it's a little under four acres, and the recommendation is to develop workforce housing. Again, when we say develop workforce housing, we're not talking about how, we are not housing developers. We are the city, we are the landowner, so we would be looking to seek partnerships on maximizing whatever the goals are for this property. So the number of units, the style, basic, you know, according to the city requirements.
This doesn't have an address, is...
It's just north of the Episcopal leaning church.
Yeah, okay. Does this have access?
Church, here.
Okay.
This is the hall field. This is...
Captain Cook.
This is right here. And this is a recent property that has been...
So, go ahead.
I just have one more. My initial thought was with this is, this might be a good parcel to partner with large employers.
With large employers, like... With large employers like, like the next one.
So this might be an improper question for just the time that we're going right now. There's been a lot of talk among the council, I don't know if there's been a consensus, certainly not, but a lot of mentioning back and forth about going into smaller-built houses, the microhouses. And we have a housing problem that we're trying to solve, and as soon as you build it and you sell it, that's, that opportunity to be able to offer it is gone. I'm wondering, I know we don't want to be in the development business, or maybe we do want to be in the development business, what is the wisdom of maybe taking a piece of property that we already have sewered and watered and literally backing the tiny houses into their slot and then leasing it, owning the property and the, and we've already made that, you know, investment into the utilities. And that way you can have it forever. I mean, one folks move out, you can move another set in, and then you would maintain it, an inventory of small houses.
A couple of things about that. One is it's, water and sewer aren't there yet, they're nearby, but they're not there. Tiny houses, later in the discussions, I'll get into that a little bit, there are some issues around tiny houses, but I think that depending on how we end up defining tiny houses, that can be addressed. As to whether we want to be developers or not, that's a possibility, especially, well, I think we'll come up on the next piece of property that we look at, but the, there was another issue...
...property.
Oh, one thing is you said, you know, if we sell it, we lose the opportunity. I think the idea would be that, like with the 15th Street project, property, we would essentially partner with somebody and define what we would want to be there and say, you know, this is how we choose to exercise this opportunity at this time. The idea is it would be workforce housing in there. We bought the land with workforce housing, with affordable housing money, and it only makes sense that it would be developed with workforce housing. And that can be done through a development agreement. I think that would be the intent with this property.
If I may also be so bold to mention that because we are not alone in having a housing issue, I think it's good to talk about all different housing types, but some properties may lend themselves better to different types of housing. And if there's a way to have higher density or get a more, a higher number of units on a property, I think that we should not waste the vertical development potential in order to really kind of catch up with being behind the curve on housing in general. So this may be a good spot for that or may not, I don't know, I mean, but those are things that we could talk about as we go along.
Yeah, and I know vertical housing maybe is needed, but it's not the most pleasant thing to look at, at least some of the ones I've seen are.
The way the state law defines vertical housing is basically an apartment, more than one-story apartment building, that's all it is. And if it is developed under the vertical housing provisions of state law, there's a property tax abatement on it for, I think, five years. So, but it's a way to encourage lower cost on the property, but it's a possibility.
Are there any other questions on this property?
Yes, I would, I would agree with you, Allison, that given as quickly as a lot of the last couple of apartment complexes built have filled up and the waiting list for them, I think there's a definite demand for them. So I'm in favor of the vertical housing option.
Having said that, private sector right now is actually fulfilling that demand. The rate of return on those apartments is quite high, and we've added a lot into our inventory and hadn't had to spend a penny. And so I'm not sure how much our efforts to bring into that market would be a good idea.
Yeah, it would be, it would be your decision as a policy decision about who you want to build the housing for. So, you know, those examples are market rate and we need more housing, period. But we do also need housing for different income levels, for workforce and for low-income. And we have a few other notes to go over with you if we have enough time in this meeting, but you're right, market rate, we have seen some which has been great, but we might want to make other decisions and investments about getting multifamily for other income brackets, which would involve partnering with other nonprofits, or as Richard mentioned, doing something with vertical housing tax abatement, different strategies like that. So again, I'm kind of getting into the how instead of the what, but...
There was a company in Utah that I've been speaking with that takes care of that. They say, look, we're going to designate this portion as senior, this portion is this percent of poverty level, this percent here, and then you can actually transition within the same complex or in or out of it based on those.
Yep. There are lots of nonprofit housing developers that are the experts.
And the, the real big question that is posed before you is not simply to develop, but to develop it as to meet the workforce housing needs. Now, how we get there may, we may end up coming back with a half a dozen different ideas and proposals for you to consider, but the real focus is, is that it's to develop it for workforce housing, and that means it has to meet certain income levels and so forth.
However, the flip side of that is, don't mean to dominate, the flip side of that is retirement housing. That's a huge part of our economy and you can argue that it's as big as tourism. Are we going to have the housing inventory to meet their needs, to attract them into town?
You better address that as you get to housing.
Yeah, we have a provision in the code for what we call elderly housing, which, you know, which I qualify for, as do I think probably all of us, at least all of you up here. That's for, what, 55, 55 or over. The essential thing is it's a lower parking requirement for it. For both of the new apartment developments that have been built recently in town, because the developer could not accommodate the number of parking spaces he needed for just a straight apartment building, he did have, a part of those apartments are designated for elderly housing. But we can, we can do more with that, too.
You can go on.
All right. Map number six, this one is in Ocean Lake. This is about three acres that's developable. And the staff recommendation is to develop workforce housing with other large employers. So this is the site that, that we've been, actually, Richard has been having some initial conversations. Do you want to talk about that or...
Yeah, this one, we've been talking about internally among the staff and what we can do with this. It was a, an abortive townhouse development many years ago, the city ended up with. There are internal water lines in place which may or may not need to be replaced, but it's a possibility of doing either cottages or townhouses or something like that. I've discussed it in a very preliminary way with Leslie Ogden from the hospital, and she expressed some interest. We've been talking about also trying to have, have the school district onboard, where it could end up being workforce housing for the school district, because it's right by Ocean Lake School, for the hospital, because it's close to the hospital, and for us, for, rather than having to have people come from the valley or whatever to commute in from the valley, it could be an opportunity for people to have housing close to their employment place. It's, it's in a formative stage in our minds right now, but I, but I think it's a really good opportunity where maybe, as Council Board mentioned, maybe it's possible we do want to be developers or work with, with someone to come up with a plan and a way to make it so it serves our major employers in town.
Have a comment. The map five before this one looks to me like it might lend itself better to that large employer partnership, though at map six that we're on, the topography is kind of wild there, and isn't there's a skate park right there?
Skate park is there. What would end up happening is it would be a planned unit development and with, sort of inside that lower right-hand area inside the road, that's where the housing development would happen.
Okay, good.
And we could transfer density from that area, from the remaining area into there. So we could conceivably get 15 to 20 units in there.
You know, that area always seemed ripe for me to be somewhere where we could have stage events, like a natural amphitheater, because we've talked about that in different parts of the town. And because we're surrounded by almost no housing, you'd have minimal impact on neighbors, I just always thought, where do we have in this city to go and have a concert?
Right, yeah. In this area in here is actually where the skate park has expanded into here.
Right.
Down in this area, there's actually a stormwater detention pond.
Uh-huh.
The topography is very steep from the road down, down this way. This is essentially a peak, not, not a bowl, but a peak. But, yeah, conceivably, I guess it may be possible to have something back in that area.
Yes, I could go along with the lower portion being housing, but that just seemed ripe to just continue our park growth in that particular area.
And the Parks Plan talks about increased park development in the remainder of the property.
I think it should, because I think if we give that up, then there's more, there's going to be more pressure on, from people who live around it about noise and vandalism and things like that. It just seems, we've got it, let's keep it.
Allison, can anybody tell us why these two properties, that map number five we just saw and six, you know, are close proximity, both talked about workforce housing. This one is picked with, you know, you added with larger employers. So is it the size, this is smaller, map six, that's what saw, you saw, Mr. Townsend, as a chance for other partners or...
What I saw for, for us was the, probably the least cost for infrastructure, because there's, there's water and sewer immediately adjacent, in fact, there actually are internal water lines that, as I say, may or may not still be good, you know, might not serve exactly how the development comes out. It was, there were a couple of essentially access roads or driveways or what have you were graded in there years and years ago. There is the remains of a sewer line, which may or may not have to be replaced, which is also internal there. But it was, it was sort of the least cost to the city, I thought, and closest access to the hospital and schools, less, less close to us, neither one of them are that, are that close to the city, but still they're within the city and within a reasonable distance. It's only like 30 blocks away or something from City Hall and so, just seemed like a good opportunity, something we owned, something that could be developed relatively inexpensively compared to other properties.
So based on the, the one on map five, which is a block away.
Right.
What I heard you say is because potentially infrastructure is already in here, the, the cost to further develop might be less, especially if an employer, larger employer was looking to subsidize in some fashion, you know, housing for their workforce versus the bigger lot, the map five.
I don't understand your question.
And I don't understand why you picked one over the other. So that's, I'm trying to pin you down as to...
Well, again...
Both could.
Both, both could be.
Both are wide open, okay.
Both could be. Map six I picked because, again, like I said, it's the lowest cost to the city, and actually the road's already there. The other one, you either have to extend, I think it's Key up from the south, or come in somehow off of 25th, so there's, there's infrastructure costs there. So I do, I was, I've been thinking of this site for years for, for city workforce development, the other site, the map six site. The map five site, I've been thinking more for essentially partnership development, you know, with someone who's in the business of doing workforce housing.
When this, when on one of the city-owned houses that you're using for workforce housing, does the city pay property taxes on that? They don't, do they?
I'm not sure whether we do or not, with, some, some properties that the city owns, I think we do have to pay taxes on because we're not using them for a city purpose, you know, public purpose, so I'm not sure about those.
We'll, we'll check, we'll find out.
Okay, we'll move on to map number seven. This one's in the D-Lake area of town and it's about 1.2 acres.
Can we consensus on that?
Oh, do you want me to go back?
No, I think we have a general idea.
Okay.
That, that one will need more discussion.
So the recommendation for this one is to develop workforce housing and then secondary recommendation is to sell. It is in tsunami zone, it has water and sewer. This one, this one we actually will need to do a little bit more research with. There is a deed restriction, but we have a feeling that it's just for the lower two lots. There, as you might remember, last year there was a property, there's a lot line adjustment that's underway for the food bank and with the church that's adjacent, and so this is undergoing the lot line adjustment now, it just hasn't been finalized. And, and then we'll see kind of where we're at on that, and we need to also take a harder look at the deed. So this one, we'll come back to you with more information.
A quick question, and I'm sorry if you said something, I was distracted. How did we come to own that piece of property? That's not a lot of land.
The lower lots, I think we got from ODOT, the city of Ocean Lake got from ODOT for sewage disposal. And that's, that's the, the deed restriction is that it was for sewage disposal, and if we cease using it for that, then, then they get it back.
What does that mean?
I don't know, and I'm sort of afraid to ask.
Yeah. We've been some good jokes about that.
Yeah, it may have just been like a settling pond or something, but I just, I just don't know. It was, again, it was back in the days of the city of Ocean Lake, before any of us were here.
There's also a need...
Lila's got some input here. Wastewater treatment plant, plan, okay, got it, thank you.
There's also a need for parking in the areas, you know, this is near the cultural center, so there are a few ways that we could use all of this property, we just have to sort out what we have the ability to use. Map number eight, this is also in the D-Lake area, about two and a quarter acres. Staff recommends creating a park, as you can see, it's in the flood plains, it's significant wetland, doesn't have water, it does have sewer on just one of the lots. And since...
We've had quite a bit of discussion on this property because on its potential as residential property, gorgeous spot for a development, but there are some significant problems associated specifically with the wetlands and our inability to mitigate those wetlands. And so in the end, as I kept peppering these guys with those kind of questions, we found that looking at a park is probably that's best use.
It's almost entirely wetland. You can see there's sort of the, the green, the light green area, that is preliminarily mapped as wetland. A delineation would have to be done to see just how much wetland there is, but it looks like almost all of it, except for that area in the, in the lower right corner, is wetland.
And then access to the property is just first?
Right.
No options for anisement?
There's no public right... There's no public rights of way, other than first, that there's adjacent to. And it all drops down very significantly from the Highway One-on-One level, it drops down quickly into that. Although, we've heard recently that, that lot that is shown, I think, is, what, two, two fifty-six or something like that? I'm not sure what the number, anyway, the, the westernmost of the northern lots, it may end up coming on the market soon, and that may be able to provide some access to it, if that was combined.
My next question is, I don't know law concerning this, do we have to have a separate egress, or can you have just a single point of entrance and egress?
We can, if we treat it as one piece of property, we, you know, we can, it can just be one access.
I really like this idea. And so, one of the options we could add to the list would be to retain it.
Yeah, I think if we created a park, we'd probably have to, because I don't know many people who are taking on the cost of long-term.
Yeah, that would be part of it, is the creation of a park would mean we'd retain it. So, our recommendation is that we keep this property until such time as we're ready to develop it for a recreational purpose.
Do we have an expense tied to this already for maintenance? Do you have any idea what we're spending to take care of it?
Do you know what you put into as far as maintenance on that property?
It's wetland area, so I'm not doing it, okay.
Isn't there a trail through there, the-
Yeah, there, there is a little trail, as you can see, that lower right lot, I think-
You're talking about this piece right here?
And then a boardwalk?
Yeah, that's the State Park property to the east.
Yeah.
And the trail comes in right through here, but it stops.
You gotta dig your way through a little bit farther.
Any other questions on this one?
Being wetlands is probably not likely. I'm just thinking of additional parking for the whole D-Way side, and, and I think Urban Renewal has a property along One-O-One as well. Is there a need for parking down in this area?
Certainly, two times a year, there's a strong need for property.
Two times a year?
Well, and probably most weekends in the summer. It's possible that, that, that there's enough land in that lower right, right property to put in some parking there.
But, that might be in conjunction with a park, turn it, turn it into a park and have plenty of parking to absorb, okay?
I have a question about the property that has a number on it, twelve thirty, that's city-owned, correct?
Yeah, Urban Renewal owns that one, and, and that one's in our list, so we'll get to it in a minute.
Oh, okay.
Are there any other questions on this one?
Yep. To picture where it is.
Yeah, well, and it, it's good to look at what, what's around. Okay, map number nine is Southeast Third Street. This one is a parking lot, and then it also has water access, because one of the canals from Devil's Lake kind of carves around in there. It is in significant wetland, flood plain, tsunami zone, it's a low elevation. It has water, it has sewer, and then our, you can see there's a pump station there as well. So, the first recommendation is to sell it, and the second is to sell it and retain public water access. We would obviously adjust for where our pump station is.
One of the interesting things about this piece of property is that it's, it's, it's a pretty good-sized parking lot, but it's probably one of our least-used parking lots. And with, and now, we've talked quite a bit about how do we maintain the access to the water, because it is a kayaking area, and we look, can you make it as a drop-off point where people can get in and so forth. So, we like that feature with it. But, one of the thoughts that we've had is that if we sold that property, could we use the proceeds to put a parking lot in somewhere where it's, would be more well-used. Now, this property does border on a one-way road, which would go to the east, and so-
Good question. If we were to say, sell it today, how long would it take to get sold, supposing there was a buyer readily available?
Answer that after I talk to the attorney, to find all of the process we have to go through to dispose of property. I don't want to miss any steps that we have to do, but I know you'd have to declare surplus, and it meets the public purpose to sell it and all of that process.
And I don't want to, I'm sorry, we do need to keep moving, so I'll limit questions.
Do people currently use that as access for kayaking, did you say?
I don't think they do, because it's not-
We haven't, we haven't developed the ability to use that. Saturday, I walked down through there to try to find my way back to the lake. I actually saw a kayaker going through it. But, it's, we haven't developed to the point where you could actually get a kayak back in there, let alone yourself.
I think I like option number two.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. No, I agree.
Okay, moving on to map number ten. This is in the D-Lake district. This is about a third of an acre, it's an RM zoning, it was purchased with city general funds, and recommendation is to use for implementation of Parks Master Plan project. This is kind of hard to see, but you can kind of get an idea.
No, we can't.
Well, it's-
It's invisible.
This, this is one parcel that would be used in a larger area of a park plan.
A couple of things to point out about this piece that are important. This is part of the property on which our police building and on which our Public Works complex sits on, and it does have restrictions associated with how this property can be used. Only a certain percentage of it can be used for something that is non-park recreation-related items. So, as we looked at that, we, we first asked ourselves the question, can we divide these pieces off, create them into a lot or something like that? We can't, because of the restrictions associated with it.
Yeah, it's all part of the same thing.
Yeah. And so, anyway, so, once we began discussing that restriction, then our planning department has been looking at how do you develop that into a park, especially given the slowness and the difficulty we've had in developing the Taft Park. This was the second area that they had identified in the Parks Master Plan, that if you can't do it there in the south, then come up to this area. While they didn't identify the specific piece, they had identified the general area. And, once we started looking at the design of a park, things really began to kind of gel with this property on how it could be used.
So, is this otherwise known as Deborah's Park?
Deborah's Park.
Okay.
Are there any questions on this, or shall we move along?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Map number eleven, this is the former Taft-Nel Scott D-Lake fire station, and it's a small parcel. And, this one, we recommend that we use it for business development purposes.
That could be a couple of, a couple of items that could be done on that. One is that we can retain the building, the property, try to use it in a business incubator format, or we could simply sell it, either, either way. But, but the recommendation is that it would be developed as commercial property.
Selling it works for me.
Moving on, oh, did you have a question?
I was kind of looking like I did. Just, how long has it been, how often do we sell one of our properties?
I'll have to answer that one.
Not since you've been here.
Not in the last two years.
I guess I'll change, but how long has it been?
I don't, I don't know what year we, we acquired this one. I think this was part of the swap with the fire district.
It's been a while.
So, we don't normally sell?
Not very often.
I don't recall us selling anything since I've been here. We've been assembling a couple of sites, but I don't recall us selling, you know, there, we have had property that we've transferred, like, to the Land Trust and that kind of thing, Habitat for Humanity. And that, we've done that over, over the last several years, but it's been a few cases, I guess. But, it's, it's been individual lots that we've been talking about.
So, would you actively try and sell these, then, or?
We would be ac-, let me put it this way, we'd be actively trying to develop this as commercial property. It could be selling it, it could be trying to do an incubator, but we would be actively trying to develop this.
So, not just sitting on it, okay.
Exactly.
Well, I can receive for sale signs.
Good. That's, that's part two of Allison's discussion on the fifteenth of our economic. You're going to be getting into a few commercial properties that we're discussing now, and, and these properties really are, the discussion is part one. Part two will happen on the fifteenth, as Allison comes back and discusses, how do we go forward with trying to develop these properties commercially?
Okay, map number twelve, this is also in D-Lake, about point six of an acre, general commercial, this is on Highway One-O-One and also on Southwest Harbor Avenue. And, it has water, it has sewer. The potential development hurdle would be access off of Highway One-O-One, because it's ODOT's jurisdiction. And, the recommendation is to sell it, but require mixed-use development. Any questions on this one? Okay. Map thirteen, this one is in Nel Scott, it was purchased with the housing fund. It's point one-four of an acre, and it's residential zoning, and it has water and sewer. We recommend selling it, and the reason is because of the topography. This property was actually given to Habitat for Humanity years ago, and they were not able to use it because of the topography. The development just ends up being too expensive with engineering. So, it ended up coming back to the city, and, as I understand it, it's probably something that we, well, we found something else for them, I believe. But, this just is not, is not really for affordable housing, because the cost to develop it would be more than what an affordable home could.
And this is great residential property, and our recommendation is simply to sell this property.
A quick question, I'm sure it's been answered before. On the sale of these properties, who gets the money?
Depends on which fund it was purchased out of. So, if it was purchased out of the workforce, or the workforce housing fund, that's where the money would go back.
I just have a comment, which is, I think it's southeast, at least that's where I found it on the map, and not southwest.
Oh, sorry, yes, sorry about that, thank you.
I found it anyway.
Southeast Fleet.
Okay, moving along to Nel Scott, this is another one of the properties that's owned by Urban Renewal that we anticipate developing or redeveloping commercially. So, while it is a city or urban renewal-owned property, we wanted to have it as part of the discussion. But, the plans are to focus on commercial development and not primarily or solely residential. Are there any questions on this one? This is at our new intersection at Thirty-Second Street.
I just have one. Would this be a good location for another neighborhood cash emergency?
Well, it was purchased with the idea of doing commercial development.
I think it may be in the tsunami zone, too.
Oh, tsunami, sorry, sorry.
It's a real prime spot, because a, a piece of property at a corner that has a traffic light is really prime for commercial development, so it should be easy to push forward for commercial development that we want to see.
Okay. Map number fifteen, this one is in Taft. It's on the west side of the Highway One-O-One and has water and sewer. And, the Land Trust actually looked at this as well, and it's just, again, it's, the topography is too challenging to make it an affordable home in the end. So, the recommendation from staff is to sell these two properties. Are there any questions on this one? Okay, we'll move on. Map sixteen, these are in Taft, on the east side of the highway, and point one-eight of an acre, residential zoning, it's a single-family residential neighborhood. It's a fairly flat property, it is in the tsunami zone, flood plain, it has water and sewer. You can see there's two small parcels there. Recommendation is to sell those, and then second recommendation is to use for implementation of Parks Master Plan project.
Question for Counselor Anderson, if I could, because you're up to speed on all these things. What can be built there, and what would the cost be to someone building in a flood plain? I mean, you can't get insurance anymore for it, can you?
Well, you can, it's just astronomical.
Takes it out, takes it out of the affordability range, and the construction needs to be, you know, elevated.
Elevated, so, do you think anyone would build there? For me, it doesn't seem feasible, but-
Well, that, I like the idea of seeing if somebody will buy it, and then the fallback can always be, you know, like they're recommending the, the pocket park or something.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
This is, yeah, this is a, yes, thank you, this is a residential area, and one of the things that we looked at is that it, it could be sold, the other is that it could turn into a pocket park.
I just have one thought about that, is that this is a dead-end street, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah, I was drove down there, but that, at this point, it's not, it wouldn't be real friendly, let's say, for other people from the area to go in there unless maybe the street was repaired or something.
It would, if you used it for, like, a park, it would truly be just a neighborhood park. It would not be one where you're attracting people, other people to come in.
But, there aren't that many houses right there. But, anyway, my second thought was that, you know, if we, this is another Mr. Anderson question, that if, if we do get the old Taft School part going at some point, then that's just like a half a block, or, I mean, it's just right there, so. So, this property might just be sitting there. Okay.
Hopefully, we're a good neighbor while we own it. I meant cleaning up.
Ron, I'm showing four twenty-eight here.
We can pick up from here. What I would suggest that we do on this is, some of these properties are going to go, and be a part of the discussion on the fifteenth. So, we just pick up from here and combine the remaining part of the workforce housing with the economic development discussion.
Anyone else have anything else? Reaching for the gavel.
Oh, Mayor? No, let's see. No, 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 we don't.
I've been waiting for this map seventeen, develop ourselves, salary developers.
Do something with that.
You got one minute?
Okay.
If you want to go through seventeen, go through seventeen, that's fine.
Yeah, five more.
And we're on seventeen, and so, you've got a total of twenty, twenty-one properties.
Yeah, there's five left, and the last three are city-owned for, for existing employee housing, so.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's up to you if you'd like to move through the next two.
Yeah.
Is that all right?
Nope.
Okay, so, map number seventeen, this one is urban renewal property. We've been assembling these over time, and this is another one that is targeted for commercial development.
Please.
Okay. Map eighteen, this one is in Cutler City. This was acquired using Parks Fund money, and it's in a single-family home residential area. It's on the south end of, you can see it's on Southwest Sixty-Ninth, and just to the north of it is the county-owned Cutler Wetland Trails. And so, the first recommendation for this property is to sell it, and the second recommendation is to retain for future trailhead access.
The problem with, the problem with this property as being a trailhead or any type of a park or recreation is that you're at the very end of a dead-end street, and not very many cars that are in there, and there's not a place to turn around. It has some difficulties in trying to create a recreation use to it, just because of its location on the street. And so, that's why we put the first recommendation is to sell it, and then use the funds to buy property for workforce housing.
And we have open space not far from there.
Yes, you, in, in Cutler City, like, just to the north of this is all of the counties, it's that beautiful- it's that beautiful open space when the rhododendrons are in bloom, it's just absolutely fantastic wetlands, trails. But you have also within this area, Cutler City has a pocket park as well that's within, is just a few blocks away.
I'd just like to say that I would like to retain it, because those other two trailheads, you can't park in front of those houses. There's one further towards the highway that, there's a place on the side of the road for two cars, but, you know, if you don't live in Cutler City, you can't access these trails. And I like to go look at the rhododendrons, but anyway, just my two cents.
Okay. Move along to number nineteen, so this one is being used for employee housing for the city. Are there any questions? And here's the second one, which is just basically out here, Southwest Ninth, and then the last one, that's also owned by the city for employee housing. Transitional housing, as we call it, as people move here from out of the area, and then need some time to find housing on their own.
If, if I could, for further explanation, twenty-one and twenty were really bought to safeguard the future use of, for parking on this complex.
Yes.
We knew to fully utilize the square footage in this building, we would need more parking. So those, those two, twenty-one and twenty, is what they were purchased for, with the understanding that since there were usable housing on it, we would use it for that interim housing, but, but the intent was to expand parking for this complex.
Thank you.
Can we go through it?
Thank you.
Anyone else? We're adjourned.
I just three minutes.
There you go.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, Allison. Thank you, Richard.